I will now call to order the Withfield Town Council meeting, Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 6 o'clock PM, being held in the Municipal Building at 150 East Monroe Street in Withfield. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Kathy Patterson.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, on the approval agenda of the agenda, which requires a motion.
So move.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Mayor Taylor, I'd like to amend the agenda, and I would like to hold off on B, I mean, 11B, until the Public Works Director can be here to explain that a little bit further, please.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and an approval of the agenda with the corrections. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. Roll call vote. Start with Vice Mayor Patterson. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Next is a consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of August 25th, 2025, and the work session of August 26th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Taylor, I would like to not vote on what was discussed on the 26th because I was not here at the time, please.
Okay.
Or I'd like to abstain from that, so thank you.
All right, any other? All right, so all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any oppose? Next is citizens' period, and we do have, well, that would like to come up and speak. So, Mr. Robert Green, I believe that you'd be the first one. If you'll just state your name and your address when you come up to the mic, please, sir.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Robert Green, the fourth. I live at 190 Le Hugh Drive here in Withfield. I've been living there for the last 45 years in our own little retired home. I have a couple, actually, I have a question and a concern. It's considering the Oakwood Cemetery. I was out there, I go out there a lot as far as checking graves, and I have a lady that lives in Virginia Beach that has a friend, an elderly man, that was part of their family, and I check on her grave, their grave. So I was out there the other day, last week, and there was the construction of the building across from the fence there, and there was a gentleman there that came up and we were talking, and he said that there was a possibility that the town was going to move that fence about 12 inches more inside of the cemetery. So first of all, I want to ask, is that true? Does anyone?
I'll answer what I think I know, but everybody else can, we had this dialogue last time as far as they think they need to move the fence, but I was under the impression that the fence was going to come out just a little bit, so I don't know.
Does anyone know?
What do you remember?
I think it's going to come inside. That's why they have to take.
So they want it to come inside, correct? Is, I mean, the reason I'm asking, I'm very concerned about that. Number one, Oakwood Cemetery is historical and it's very sacred to the Black African, the African-American community. We have relatives out there, descendants, and a lot of folks that are buried out there are part of history. There's a gentleman that's buried out there that actually helped invent an artificial leg. But not only that, I think that if that is a proposal, it should come and ask the African community, African-American community, because there are graves out there that are not marked. There are people that are buried on top of people out there, and bringing that closer in is going to disturb graves. Now, some people might think you can stick sin and probe. There is a lot of people out there, and I think that would be a desecration to that cemetery. So I want the council here to think about that, because I personally don't want that and I won't stand for it. So I hope that it's not going to happen for that reason. That was the only place that our people could be buried, and like I said, there are people that, if Mr. Johnson was still alive, he would tell you, there are people buried on top of people. I know personally myself, probably 35 or 40 years ago, I helped a family dig the grave for one of their, for the grandmother, and we came in on top of graves. So I would like for you all to really take this and think about this, please. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think there's more work going on as far as trying to figure out exactly what's going to, what they're going to recommend to the town council, but I think they're still collecting some of the data.
Well, what it is, the gentleman, one gentleman that was working out there is the one that brought it, that brought it up. He also said that the exit way, that they needed more room to exit the vehicles. Now, they can move that exit on up, because it's already hazardous to come out of that cemetery now. But either way, like I said, I've got people out there, and there's people I grew up with and people that my grandparents knew that, that, you know, that's not a good idea.
We appreciate you bringing that concern. Now, Mr. Green, you said that the gentleman said they were going to have to move the entrance way a little bit?
No, excuse me, no. He said the entrance way, the exit way, the way it is now, it's hard to get out. So they're talking about moving it up to get a better exit, because he had said something about trying to trim trees or whatever. But moving that thing in so many inches, it's, I'm telling you, it's a lot of, there's graves out there that you, that we don't even, we don't even know, there's so many people out there.
I believe there's been businesses out there before, and I could be wrong, but I don't ever remember a complaint at all whatsoever. Do you all remember a complaint at all whatsoever of them? So I don't know why they'd have to change that. I could be wrong, but.
But I'm, you know, coming back in, you're talking, because right, Mr. Walter Grubb is his name, his grave I keep up. It's a lady that I went to school with, she was a Wolford, Rosie Wolford, which they lived out there near the fish hatchery, and that grave is probably maybe 11 inches from it, from that fence there. And I know it's some more people buried out there besides him that's not marked. So we need to really think, you, y'all need to really think about that. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. Appreciate that.
I think I brought up in the last meeting that if the town does not own that property, it should be that property owner's responsibility to fix their entrance way. They should engineer their own entrance way versus the town moving that fence. I don't see why the town would have to move the fence when they should have, if they didn't like the entrance, they should have engineered it in their design to have a better entrance and exit. I know in our work session, at first, I thought, well, okay, but then after I thought about it, the town doesn't, that's not our fault. They brought that property, and so they should be responsible for designing their entrance and exit for their employees and parolees to enter and exit safely. That should be their responsibility and not the town's. I could be wrong. I mean, that's my opinion, and we can have further dialogue if you all would like, but I'm not for moving the fence.
I don't know, is Mr. Anderson, did he have more information than he was going to bring to us after that meeting? So we'll wait to hear from Anderson. None. We'll stay on top of that for you all. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
You are next, sir. And again, please state your name and your address.
I'm getting used to this, and I have my hearing aids in. When I was here the last time, excuse me, you said that it wasn't a problem with the lodge hall, and I just want to say, before I get to that, the state has a surplus of money, and if that's a problem out there at the graveyard, let them use some of that surplus. You know, don't, don't use the town's money, use the surplus. I think that would be the best way to go. If they have to use the entrance, if they have to move the entrance over to the right side, use that surplus, don't use your money. Now, what I wanted to say is that Pulaski, Galax, Bluefield, all those towns are trying to keep some of the Black history. This lodge hall is history. Use some of the money that we pay taxes every year, and if we don't, we can't get our tax, use some of that money to do something with the lodge hall. Don't turn it down. You said that you're not to mention it, you will not mention turning it down, but why did it come up? Please, please answer that, please.
Well, because, and I don't know how much you could hear me, you know, last, not now, but before. So, you know, I did bring that topic up, but I did not bring that topic up for it to be, you know, torn down. It had been being maintained for quite some time by a gentleman, and then that gentleman passed away. I'm not, I don't know his name. His son was then trying to maintain the building, keep, keep it up, keep the windows and everything, keep it from leaking, and then, and I guess that kind of went away.
Okay.
So it was starting to really look like it needed some, some.
Well, can we get some, can we get some grant money, fix the porch, fix the roof, and start each year, put a little grant money into fixing it up, put a historical sign out there in the front, and start doing that like some of the other cities are doing? Can we do that? Is that asking too much to take some of our tax money and put it into their building?
I mean, I can't answer for anybody else, but I'm not so sure if we're at that, I'm not comfortable that we're, the people that we were, and I say we, meaning the town, were contacted on and off over these years, but they also have one over in.
We wishy-washy all that a little bit down. Come on now.
No, I'm not wishy-washy. I'm just saying that there are, there are other people that were, who have a, what do you call that thing?
A problem with it, because they want the land.
I don't know anybody that wants the land. I've never heard anybody want the land.
Well, then, why can't we?
I've never heard anybody that want to turn it down.
Why can't we take, why can't we take some of the money, the tax money, that we are paying every year, and fix it up and make it a historical site, and then do it that way?
Ms. Corbin, do you know, have we had several complaints on that, or is it just like in general that it just comes up every now and then, or do we have, have we had several complaints on that?
I've had to check with building officials, Spreaker, to see how many complaints that we've had about the building. Honestly, don't know the answer to that.
We have, we have, we have, in this town, we have master sergeants, we have a general that's been in the military, we have people that have served in Vietnam, we've had people that have served in World War I, we've had people serve in World War II, we've had people to serve in Vietnam, I'm a Vietnam veteran. Why can't we put that as a historical place and put those people in there so that our kids that come up will know about that?
I personally don't have a problem with that, if that, if that can go forward with that. I mean, I'm just not sure that the town of Withfield is the only, is that you slapping me?
I'm smacking bugs. I'm smacking bugs.
You know, if, if, there were some other lodge people that are not here, that Mr. Spreaker had been in contact with over the years, and, you know, they were just in contact, nobody knew who, who owned it, nobody knew what to do.
Well, I have the books.
Well, that's awesome.
I have the books, and I'm going to get some more books of who people to contact. Some of the people are in Bristol, Virginia, and then there are some people in Roanoke, and then there are some people in Richmond, and then I'm going to get in touch with those people.
The Richmond people, I believe, are the ones that Mr. Spreaker has been in contact with, so he would really.
I'll get with Mr. Spreaker, and I'll bring the books down, and then we can go from there. And I'm sure if they're not willing to maintain it, then being a historical place, they wouldn't have any problem with it. They're not maintaining it anyway.
True.
So then I'll get back with Mr. Spreaker, and Mr. Spreaker and I'll get busy on it.
That'd be great.
Since, does anybody on the board have a problem with it? Now, they're putting it down, now it's back here on history. Thank you so very much. I don't have any other problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why did you ask if he was smacking at you? Why, why would you say that?
Well, because I was, he went like this.
No, I was killing a bug.
I didn't know you were killing a bug.
I was exterminating.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the bug.
I mean, why would you even insinuate that? I don't understand why you would even say, make a comment like that to a citizen.
It was not meant to be harmful. I apologize if I hurt your feelings, sir.
I was just killing a bug.
And I didn't see the bug. I'm sorry. It was just, I'm sorry. I didn't mean anything by it. All right, is there anybody else that needed to talk or wanted to talk during citizens' period that's not here? All right. So we're going to move forward. Next on the agenda is to consider the reappointment of Ellen McDaniel to the Withfield Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Deputy Clerk Brandy Jones, do you have anything to?
In your packet, you have just the explanation, but there is, she's served on the committee since 2021, and this will be her second reappointment.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So move, Mayor Taylor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any oppose? That motion carries. Next is to consider the appointment of a member of Withfield Tree Advisory Committee to fill the unexpired term of James Coven. The term expires May 14th, 2027. Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion to accept Mr. Williams? Is that what?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Right here, none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any oppose? Congratulations to Mr. Williams. Next on the agenda is to consider the adoption of a resolution regarding the Lithia Road Sidewalk Connection Project. I don't have the last.
I have that on number C. I think it's consideration for Mr. Terry to use the main street sidewalks on Tazwell Street, Fort Street, on Saturday, October 18th, 2025, to conduct an arts-at-the-crossroads event.
Need a motion?
So move.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Right here, none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye as well. Any approved? All right, that motion carries. Next on the agenda is to consider the adoption of the resolution regarding the Lithia Road Sidewalk Connection Project.
Was Ms. Holden going to do a presentation?
Mr. Woods is here to answer any questions that you might have about that.
All right. You have in your packet a copy of the resolution for this project, but before we talk about that, I wanted to bring you up to date on this project. When we talked about it, I don't remember what.
Can you hold on, Dr. Woods, just a second? Did we miss a presentation? Do you know? Because on my agenda, we're supposed to see a presentation, or did I mess, mess up?
This one.
Right here.
That's, that's from C.
If anybody just had any questions.
After C, it says, staff report presentation by Assistant Town Manager Lane Holmes.
That's if you have any questions about the art of the crossroads. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. When we spoke about this in a previous meeting, there was definitely some concern over the high cost of the project, and since then, I've been, worked with the consulting engineer that did the cost estimate and looked at a little further into the plans to give us a little more detailed cost estimate and eliminate a couple of items that were really not necessary, as well as adding in a couple of things that we had missed. And the revised estimate reduced the overall cost by $896,000, and that all would come out of the part that the town would contribute, because we were already over the maximum funding eligibility for the project. And so where we used to need to provide out-of-town funds, $1,576,000, that is now estimated to be at $680,000. And so that's, I think, pretty good news to be able to save that much and still get a quality project. The resolution that's in your packet is pretty much the standard resolution that we've used for other transportation alternatives projects, and basically, it affirms that the town will provide the required match, which is generally about 20, generally it's 20%, but because this project is a little above the maximum threshold for funding, this current estimate would put it at about 21% town match. Any questions?
How long does that offer, if you will, stand? I mean, if council decides they want to wait till we get it in the budget?
Well, this funding would be announced sometime next spring. They estimate that the funding would be made available in, at the fiscal year, so July 1st of next year, should we be approved. And in that first year, we would only be covering engineering costs, so the amount we would have to budget to keep that project moving forward during the first year would, the $457,000 that's listed there for the engineering would be the, the maximum that could be spent on the project, and we would have to pay into that, and then 80% of that would be reimbursed. And so it's, it's a, we pay upfront, and then we're reimbursed 80% of the, of whatever we spend.
So we'll get 80%?
Right.
Of the funding refunded?
Right.
Once it's completed? Okay. And so what is the closing date for the grant? Is there a specific date that they have set forth for the?
Well, we, the, the grant application is due next Monday, so a week from tonight. The, once awarded, from the time the award is made, which I believe would be like April of 2026, from whenever that agreement is offered to us, we have four years to get the project under construction. Now, obviously, if we can get it under construction sooner, we will save money, because, you know, one of the main reasons for this high cost is that they have factored in inflation, which in this particular, you know, type of construction, has been extremely high over the last five years. And so those numbers, almost half of this cost in that bottom line is allowance for inflation between now and four years, when this is going to be under construction.
You have any other questions? A consideration by town council to adopt a resolution regarding the Lithia Road Sidewalk Connection Project. I have a motion?
So move.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Right here, none. This is a roll call vote. Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Johnson, aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda is upcoming meetings by Chief Deputy Clerk Brandy Jones, please.
I just have a few. The Withfield Planning Commission will meet on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. Downtown Withfield Incorporated Board of Directors will meet on Monday, September 15th, at 5:30 at the DTW office. The Withfield Redevelopment and Housing Authority will meet on Wednesday, September 17th, at 12:00 PM at the Housing Authority office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, September 18th, at 10:00 AM at the water plant in Austenville. The District Three Board of Directors will meet on Thursday, September 18th, at 6:00 PM at the Marion Office. The Homestead Museum Advisory Board will meet on Friday, September 19th, at 10:00 AM at the Jackson Property. And the next regular scheduled Withfield Town Council meeting will be held on Monday, September 22nd, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Thank you. Next on to other business, to continue discussion regarding the town council's rules of procedure for 2025, and staff report presentation by interim Town Manager Sherri Corbin, please.
Yes, ma'am. As you see, you have the rules of procedure in front of you, and the proposed changes are in martini yellow and in bold font, and we're not asking that you take any action tonight, we're just asking that you would take these and look at the proposed changes, bring any changes that you may have back to town staff so we can incorporate them into the document, and then I could bring this back to the September 22nd meeting for the council to adopt. And I'll be glad to go over the changes. Are you open to just take them and read them and contact me with any questions that you might have?
Anybody have any questions?
We're just asking that you would take these and look at the proposed changes, bring any changes that you may have back to town staff so we can incorporate them into the document. And then I could bring this back to the September 22 meeting for the council to adopt. And I'll be glad to go over the changes. Are you open to just take them and read them and contact me with any questions that you might have?
Anybody have any questions?
I have, I do have a few. I didn't know, there was an incident that happened between a meet and greet a couple of weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago now. There was a situation that happened with a, in between the meet and greet and the town meeting that I think left us all concerned by a council person, that, that a person was verbally attacked. And, you know, even the mayor had to get up and stand in between another person coming over to another council person. I was wondering if there was anything, any dialogue that we can add into this for a little bit of protection where another council person cannot verbally attack or abuse someone?
Well, on page 11, I do have-
It's in there?
Well, on page 11, I do have a language that, you know, talks about the decorum of the council and, you know, how that the council, the mayor or the vice chairman of the mayor's absence can call the member out of order. And also that the council could adopt a resolution expressing their dissatisfaction with the actions of a council member.
And it's too late to do that now?
No, it's in there, it's on page 11.
No, I mean, it's too late to do that to the person that did the action before, I guess.
I would defer to the town attorney, but I believe if the council wanted to adopt a resolution, they could at any time. Adopt one. Would that be correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. I see in the rules of procedure where it has no agenda item suggested by a town council member shall be placed on the agenda without it being a consensus of the council to discuss the matter. I just, I somewhat disagree with that because due to, if there's something that really needs to be discussed in a council meeting and it really needs to be on the agenda, and if three people decide they don't want it on there, then they are able to have authority over what goes on the agenda. And I disagree with that. I think that if something needs to be put on the agenda, it needs to be heard. I think that it needs to be heard. I don't think that three people should control what goes on the agenda.
Well, our interim-
And given past experiences, I don't agree with that.
Just like the raises, I think we all discussed the raises, it all passed and then it's coming back. You know, or the promotions, you know, that's coming back. We all agreed, and then for some reason, things have shifted a little bit, which is fine. But it just seems like, yeah, three, three people deciding on what goes on the agenda, I just don't agree with either.
If you would like to strike that language and have it be considered by the council, we could, I'd be more than glad to do that. Could you tell me which page that's on, please? Which page is that on that you're referring to?
It has page 53 and also page 49.
I would say this, Ms. Corbin has done a good job in trying to let council see what she has down here and to have this dialogue so that she can write it the way council wants it. I mean, this is, this is what she put together usually every, is it every year?
Yes, ma'am, we try to, we try to do that.
And one more thing, are you, do you have another question? I mean, you can finish looking at it. And I, go ahead.
I will.
And if you may can tell me, Ms. Corbin, in here where like one council person cannot go and direct another, like director and employee on something, is that in here or to ask them to shred something that they cannot legally go and do that?
Yes, ma'am. There is, there is a section in here that, where that we've asked the, asked the council not to ask management or staff to do anything that is illegal or ethically wrong. That's on page 12.
And then on 57, also, it says, "Town council members shall refrain from asking town management and town staff members to perform tasks or projects until the majority of council members agree that the task or project should be completed. Town council members shall not request town management or town staff to perform any task or project that is illegal or ethically wrong."
And that should take care of-
Page 57.
The issues we've had before?
Yes.
Okay.
And it lets town staff know that they can, you know, tell council, we're not, we're not really allowed to do that.
And shouldn't do that.
Yeah, exactly, ma'am. Would the council wait for me to remove the language about the consensus of the council to put an agenda item on there? Because what happens sometimes is, you know, council will call and ask us to, one will ask us to put things on the agenda and the, another will call and ask us to take that exact same item off the agenda. So we're, we're pulled, you know, pushed and pulled. And so we're trying to eliminate that. We're just trying to come up with a set of regulations and, or procedures that everyone on council can agree with.
Well, and everyone on council should be able to, like, be able to put something on the agenda. You know, it just shouldn't be down to, you know, I think what I was told recently, I need to get on the, I need to get on the winning side, that you're not going to win this. And I'm not on here to win anything. I'm on here to try to do right and just, I'm not going to pick sides, you know.
Ma'am, I understand.
I don't think anybody should be calling and putting staff in the middle to, if something's on the agenda, they shouldn't be back-dooring somebody and saying, "Remove it." That's not right. To me, it's a disrespect to other council members.
But if you have any language that you would like to add to this document, if you would just call and speak with me, I'll be glad to put it in here and the council can reconsider this at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for the time that you put in.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you.
And that's all I have on that, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is council member time. That was Vice Mayor.
Right now, I do not have anything.
Mayor, I don't have anything at this time, no ma'am.
I have one thought for council to, for, so on behalf of the town clerks and everything, having to do all this work is a, you know, I just want you all to give thought to this later, but is there any way that we can downsize how many other meetings we have? Like some of the, some of the meet and greets may not be necessary, but some of them may need be. So just give some thought to that because they're just getting piled up with, with just trying to do things.
I thought we were doing away, I would still like to do the meet and greets if, if like sometimes, you know, we didn't know the gentleman who came this evening, or I didn't. And people, I would like to do the meet and greets if we don't know them. I was thinking that we did away with the work sessions for the time being until budget comes closer. So was that the meeting you were talking about or other meetings?
I was just, just in general, because it does change throughout the year, you know, as far as budget and all that kind of stuff. But, I mean, the meet and greet is basically one of the ones that we had talked about.
Yeah, and I like the meet and greets. Sort of interesting to hear the people, what they have to say, especially the ones, you know, I don't know.
Because again, it was just food for thought, so think about it and, you know. That's any thoughts to-
Because it would just be like 30 minutes before we come in, right, basically?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, 30 minutes, I don't think's going to make or break us, I don't think.
Well, it wasn't us that I was-
Right, right, right.
So anyway, just give it some more thought or whatever and put your thoughts where they need to be. That's all I had.
I attended the dedication of the bench for Mr. Clemmons last week. And I want to thank Councilwoman Ms. Johnson for being very helpful with the family to get that done. You did an excellent job.
My pleasure.
Good job, Vice Mayor.
It was, it was a pleasure to see the family and some of Dewey's friends. And it was a moving, little moving ceremony. I appreciated it. Thanks for your help, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome, you're welcome, my pleasure.
That's all I have.
Anything else under council member time before we move forward?
I think they went and had lunch on the bench. He and his wife, Mr. and Mrs. Clemmons, I think they went and had lunch on the bench. And I thought that was quite nice.
Well, if there's nothing else to come before council, council now feels it's necessary to go into a closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711, a consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters pursuant to 2-2-3711-819, discussion regarding security in town facilities. I need a motion?
Say move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, is there any discussion? Hear none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are now going to go in closed session. Thank you all for- We are now going to go in closed session. Thank you all for...
Town Council now finds it necessary to reconvene into an open session by stating that the town council is now an open session. A motion is necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convening to the open session were discussed. I need a motion.
May I?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Here none, it will be a roll call vote. Voice Mayor?
Johnson a.
Atkins a.
Taylor a.
Patterson a.
We are now officially in open session. Is there anything else from council? Right here none, we are adjourned.